Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for December 11th, 2018. First item is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Now second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? Approval of the last, of the minutes of the last meeting?
I'd like to table the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay. Department heads, committee chair updates. Do we have any?
I just want to remind you, no one owes me issue. Cemetery. Normally we, normally we have our meetings at the last Thursday of the month. We're not this, not this time. It's going to be the 20th at four o'clock because of the holiday and different arrangements and stuff like that. So I just want to let you all, just remind you that we are changing it for that particular month, this month. Whether we change next month, I don't know. And the other thing was also about finances. Do, do anything on that yet or no?
It's on the agenda. The board's going to discuss it.
Alright, thank you.
Any other department heads, committee chairs? Nope, seeing none. Old business. ACO position?
So Elise and I interviewed two individuals today. We still have one other one, one of the person that wants to be interviewed. We're going to try to sneak in by the end of the week, but I'm hoping that she can make a recommendation to you by next week.
Very good. Let's see, D6 Dozer, I'm just waiting for the fair committee, the organization to get back to me now. They were going to have a meeting to see if it was something they were interested in as far as putting it down there. Okay, security in the San Salt building?
I think based on the workshop that you just had with the road commissioners, we've got the authorized personnel only signs put up. And as I understand it, we're going to make sure that it's locked unless it's during the middle of a storm. I will double check with Mr. Luterno tomorrow to see if they need new locks. He was going to take a look. If so, the town will pick those up and make sure they get over to him.
Yep. Just a reminder that no one other than authorized personnel, which is town employees basically, had to be in the sand, the big San Salt building. The other building out by the road is for the public to come in and help yourself and get whatever you need out of there as far as the sand and the salt. Purchase, purchase orders, excuse me.
I think I heard at least a majority of you were interested in moving forward with that. So I guess I'm looking for an amount so that we can draft something for you to look at.
I would say we keep it fairly high. I mean, we're not nickel and diamond. I'd be happy with a thousand or even higher than that. So.
I guess I'm still confused on.
How it's going to be used.
How it's going to be used. I feel like it should be purchases over a budgeted amount that's already budgeted.
That would pretty much take the whole budget. Because a budgeted amount is what's voted on.
Well, if you have, I'm saying.
What if we, you know, we want to go towards line item budgeting. So we're going to know what the project.
Yeah, well, we are, except the, the, the one department that doesn't do that is the, is the roads.
But we want them to do that.
Yes. Let's pick on the fire department, for instance. Or, let's go to the transfer station. So if, if Bob has a voted on budget of $250,000 and he's got it broken down as to so much for hauling, which is a, it happens every week, so much for disposal, to get rid of the waste, so much for maintenance on his skid steer, so much for maintenance on the packers, building repair. So he, you know, he have a, he has a breakdown similar to that. So he comes to us and says, I need to have four tires from my skid steer. And he just put an engine, or he just did a hydraulic repair on his skid steer. He has $5,000 in his budget. He spent $4,500 on the repair, but now he needs a set of tires to the tune of 2,000 bucks. But he's only got 500 left in his budget for the skid steer. It would give us notification that you have, you know, you've used 4,500. You need another two grand. You've only got 500 to spend. We'd have to look at that budget and say, okay, where, where can we shuffle some numbers?
Well, and all.
Where are you going to be over or under?
With all due respect, without, I mean, we have a line item budget in Trio now. So the treasurer isn't, isn't going to ever allow that to happen. So when he cut, you know what I mean? So the purchase order may be a good idea, but it's not going to get past her anyways. We have a purchasing policy that says any purchase over a certain amount needs to be approved in advance. So those tires, like when Bob did buy them last year, he came to us in advance anyways.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I, I feel like, you know, some of it, we're reinventing what we're already doing. I mean, the, if we're, if we're talking about this, and I think that this, be frank about it, because of the flat ground road issue, there, you know, there was still money in the budget every single week when those checks were being cut.
Right.
So there was nothing, so the lines were still within, so he was, it was still a budgeted amount and they were within the amount. So it wasn't until after.
A bill for six, over, almost $7,000 came in.
Right.
So how do we stop something like that? How do we?
This is the only way I can see to try to put a little bit of a handle on that.
We put a purchase order on, so all depart, all purchases more than $1,000 townwide. I mean, so that, you know, so that means that every time the, like the road guys want to come do a project, even if it's a line item project, they are going to get advan, you know, they're going to get approvals in advance for, you know, their culverts and for their stone. And if the, you know, if they need salt, I mean, every purchase over $1,000.
Salt, I don't, well, I mean, similar to Bob and his, oh, no, I'd probably do it for salt. Yeah.
Okay. Right, because we had to have that special town meeting, that one time to go over. So.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, it's definitely going to be a process and it's not.
Very rarely, I think, that we ever going to not.
I, I mean, is there a way?
But other than the roads, there's not a whole lot of times or departments that spend that kind of money. Do you know what I mean? They really don't. I mean, I don't think I've ever bought anything in my office for that amount, short of a printer, that the motor vehicles were fired.
Yeah, printer and computer and.
You know, even with the transfer station, there isn't things other than that that they buy on a reg, you know what I mean, on a regular basis. So it's. I mean, it, you know, so it's not going to, it's not going to encumber that much because if you, especially if you put a high number on it, but.
Right.
We need to, you know, we got to stick to it. And if we tell them that, you know, this is the process, then we can't alleviate around it.
Will it be painful just until they're, no, never mind. It's going to be painful anyhow.
It's going to be painful for them, but it's, I mean, it's.
Right.
Because, you know, because they have to, so we were saying that they have to come before the selectman, or they don't have to. We'll create a form and it needs to be initialed off at a selectman's meeting. Anything over $1,000. And again, it's not going to affect any departments, probably short of the roads and fire department on occasion. Maybe the transfer station on occasion. So it's not, you know, it's not a big piece. It's not going to be.
Should the amount be higher with them or no?
No, you'd want to have a same number, I think, throughout the, throughout the town.
I mean, could it be for the roads, it, only if they go above their anticipated, I mean, their, um, project plan?
Yeah, I mean, you can word your, your policy any way that you want. I mean, you can, um.
That's what I was.
Well, it's, I mean, that's what happened this one. The project plan was $20,000 and it went over by.
Yeah, but he knew, but there was a point that he knew he was going over and he just assumed that he could take it out of a different account.
Right.
But at least by him knowing that, it would have been shared with someone else if you had this pro, if you had this.
That's the thing. It would have come in front of us and it would have raised the red flag that, you know, it's, it's going over rather than getting the red flag when the bill came in. So.
I just feel like, you know, the, when, to have some guy, to have the guys come out and do the tree work, it's $1,200 a day.
Right.
Right.
I mean, to have them do a.
Yeah, so in that case.
Purchase order for every time they want the tree guy to come.
Yeah, they, they, I mean, it.
But once again, it's a planned event. I mean, you know, a week or two ahead of time that you're going to do trees. So you do a purchase order for $1,200 or $2,400 if he's going to be for a couple of days.
I suppose they have to get their estimates, right? I mean, they call the guys up, a tree guy up, or they're going to say, you know, this is what I need done. Will you come out, you know, because of stump grinding and, and so they're going to know what the price is. And then they're going to have to come to us and then, and then we can okay it. I mean, would it be different than, okay, like Joe was saying, he was thinking about cutting some brush? I mean, isn't that, that would be different, wouldn't it be? Is he cutting the brush or is he having somebody come in?
He's cutting the brush.
So yeah, how would it, let's just say the flat ground road was all ditching. You know, we didn't, that invoice for the material didn't come in. I mean, would this purchase order policy change that if it was just?
I'm wondering, just.
Right.
That's why I kind of feel like if it's going to go over budget of, that's why they need to have a budget, a plan, a line item budget per project.
And I think you made that clear.
Something's going to come in over it, we need to stop and say, well, let's make sure we have enough money and.
I mean, and you could put something together, just saying that, you know, any projects that are going to exceed $5,000, you know, must be met with a board of slug in advance just to go over and sit down and have a project list. Do you know what I mean? Any project that they're going to do that exceeds more than $5,000, whether it's an entire road or whether it's a salt, sand and salt purchase, you know, require that they come in and present it to you in advance. So it's not a purchase order per se, but at least you can look at, you know, you can break down the item and figure out, you know, where they are with the, with their budget.
Yeah, between the line item budget and that, that may.
I would think that would be the way to go. And 5,000, I mean, to, to them isn't, isn't, I mean, I would think 5,000 would be better than 1,000.
And remember, I mean, not to, not to turn it a little bit, and we wouldn't have flat ground road, wouldn't have, you know, I don't think it would have mattered in this situation. But as far as every other department in this situation, Michelle's giving you a revenue sheet every month and you can see the percentage that every single department has issued. So when you see that legal, you know, legal is getting high in municipal management, I mean, she's highlighting those and handing them out. So we just have to be more diligent too to, you know, to look at those. But it, I, I mean, it's an unfortunate situation where we are, but I think that it was far and few between. And if we just tighten up the line item and tighten up the purchasing policy, you know, and just keep another item. Let me talk to Michelle again. She's, she's requested that you guys meet with her next week, next Thursday at four. I'll tell you later why.
Okay.
But maybe we can throw this in too and then follow up your meeting more.
Alright.
Sounds good. Okay. Time sheets.
So from what I understand, just we're clear. So I'm going to adjust the, or I'm going to have Michelle adjust them so that they're both going the same direction as far as I think they were vertical.
Top sheet.
And make sure that they're all using the same form. So we'll get them sent out and fresh copies.
And Joe said he'd give us some feedback too.
Okay.
So it's not set in stone, but he said he was going to have, he was going to look at it, Mary look at it and give feedback.
Don't copy them and prepare them for tomorrow.
Not the time sheet, no. But just switch the top sheet.
But you want to definitely switch, okay.
So they're the same.
Anything else on that?
Did you guys sign all of the warrants? Did you hold those, one of them, did you hold that out?
Hold one out.
There's one out. Or it's actually in the folder, but not signed.
Okay. Bridge report.
So we got one bridge report in, I think that we announced last week from Calderwood. Am I saying that right? In regards to Row Bridge. Elise and I did have someone contact us that for whatever apparent reason, the post market took them an excessive amount of time to get the bid request. And they did ask if they could submit one. We figured that a second set of eyes is better than just one, especially when we're talking about that kind of money. So we expect to have another one in by the end of the week. They were working on it. We'll get it emailed over and, and sent out to you. And the other piece of it was the, making sure, we're, I think we talked briefly with Elise and Chuck after the first of the year, setting up a couple of meetings with both Milton and Wakefield to make sure that. To make sure that we're on the same page and that they're involved in this process. Because Row Bridge, for example, is, you know, is in another town. So they want to be, you know, so we thought maybe after the first of the year, we could reach out to the administrators there and kind of touch base on what the board and road committee and road commissioners' thoughts are on the bridge and which direction they're going in.
Well, set with that?
Yep.
Town sander.
So as you recall, someone from the audience mentioned the town sander last week and there was some discussion on it. I did get, I did get a little more information on it in regards to the condition of it. The opinion of some is that it, you know, that it was left out and it's quite, well, so it's rusty because it was left out. I don't know what, what the board wants to do with it. But remember last week, someone basically said, you know, why aren't we making one road commissioner use this? And then we talked about how would we pick which road commissioner? So I'm not sure what you want to, what you want to do with it.
Okay.
Are we going to see if maybe Scott wanted?
Yeah, see if he.
Neither one of them want to use it.
Okay, well then that, alright.
They're all set with it, so.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll just hang on to it for now and.
But should we cover it? I mean, we don't want it to rest more.
Yeah.
So can ask one of them to.
It's empty.
Yeah, I'll have, yeah, ask.
Maybe Joe, if he's going to go do the signs, maybe he would do that too. At least get it covered up and.
Take a look at it and see.
Figure out what.
Yeah, whether you can mothball it or whatever.
Okay. Then after that, take it off the agenda. We're good with it?
Yep.
Should we try to sell it or something or do something with it?
Hang on to it for the moment.
Okay.
I have some pictures I can show you later too.
Alright.
Okay. Fire department meetings.
Another item from public comment last week in regards to possibly making the fire department more open to the public and then turned into maybe a department head kind of split them. Elise did have a conversation with the fire chief and he's requested to come in and meet with the full board to discuss it. Oh, Kim, sorry.
Okay.
They blend together after a while. So they're going to meet with the full board. So nothing's been decided on that, but the, the board hears what you're saying and they're going to have a meeting with them to discuss it.
And if you have any questions or concerns, he says to call him and he'll meet with you and answer any, any questions or anything you have.
Okay.
Right now.
Good. Okay, on to new business. Legal fees, CEO.
So in the past, have we, as we've changed budget lines around, planning board slash code enforcement has had a $1,000 legal line. And as we, as we know from municipal government that we all have our budget, and let's just say that code, that the land use is $50,000. If a thousand of that is legal and the legal line gets overdrawn, then it's okay that it gets overdrawn as long as 50,000, the bottom line doesn't get overdrawn. Well, what's happening is that the legal in code enforcement planning board is getting overdrawn. I have pulled all of the invoices since the beginning of the fiscal year. Michelle does do a very good job of when, when a bill comes in from Lenkowski, she'll separate. If it's a conference call, one of these, for example, when we talked about Wilson Lake and I was calling him about Wilson Lake, that comes out of municipal management. That comes out of your legal fees. But if it's a violation or some sort of shoreline issue, she separates it and takes a portion out of that. What code enforcement is saying is that, listen, there's just no way for us to be able to, to budget how many issues we're going to have in legal. There's no way for us to be able to say, we're going to have 10 violations, we've got to take to court, especially with everything going on and, and the, you know, the board encouraging him to go down certain avenues as far as, you know, places, whether it be 13th Street or whether it be these junkyards. I mean, the board has given him some direction, let's face it, in his job. So what he would like to see, and I did speak to Michelle to make sure that it was legal, is that the line be moved. So he's budgeted $1,000 for legal expenses. Right now, he's spent 1385, okay? And some of those are cases that are in court. You know, we have, I think, three right now in court. What's happening is that his $1,000 supplies line underneath there is now going to be negative, is now only going to be $615 because 385 that is overdrawn. It's affecting the bottom line. So if we move the, if we make all the legal come out of one account for the entire general government, you know, whether it's fire department issue, code enforcement, whether it's a clerk's issue, selectman's issue, then you guys have a much bigger budget that the bottom line can be with, you know, that you have cushion in the bottom line. When we have line items of $1,000 supply and a $500 mileage, there's no wiggle room in those lines. There's no other department that carries legal in their own line. So fire department, for example, if we have to reach out to legal for something on their behalf and we have, or, or transfer station, if someone gets hurt, that always comes out of municipal management. His is the only one that doesn't. So I guess we're looking for input from you guys as far as that. If we decide to move the $385, so the thousand he budgeted will stay zeroed out. But by moving the rest and billing it out of the other line, out of the municipal management, it's going to prevent his bottom line from being, affecting his bottom line, which I mean, really isn't fair at the end of it because he can't control the bills.
Yep.
And I went through and pulled them all and most, you know, most of them are, we've got three courts, three people in court right now, and the rest are violations. Two junkyards and three shoreline. So, I mean, it's a, it's certainly a fair.
I mean, all the other, the fire department comes out, the transfer station.
Clerk's office, all of your issues. I mean, any issue we have townwide, I mean, you're still, the board of selectmen's still authorized when we go to legal. I mean, they still, before they get a new case or before something comes up, they still come to me and I still go to you and say, listen, you know, this is the situation with, with Johnny. We think that we need to reach out to Lenkowski or to Burke and Clegg. Are you okay with that? That process isn't going to change. So you're.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I would just want to still keep track so that.
Right.
Okay, so your bills will still come in?
Will still know which department.
Every week, like, I mean, these are the bills that you've already seen.
Yeah, I would like to know, like, if she can still, like, do a sub, like, so we know how much comes from land use because I think that's important to know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because, yeah, she should be able to do legal fees and then have subs for land use for fire department or whatever.
I mean, she can add, move that line over and call it, you know, land use legal line, legal fees and just be in, under municipal government.
Right.
General government rather than under the CEO line.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
And then this coming year when we start budgets, then we'll move it all over and go from there. Start fresh.
Okay. And the next one is budgets.
So we have the timeline that went out that you guys approved that said initial requests are due. Let's see, so departments in social services for Friday, February 1st. So I thought after the holidays, it might be a good time to remind our department heads that that's the case. And maybe in that memo, if you so choose, put some sort of limit. Or maybe you decide this year you want to just see it all come in and not put a cap and cut later. But I know that was a question from the audience as well. So because we're going to be putting a memo out reminding them the budgets are due, this is your time to tell me if you want to add anything to that memo.
Let's think that one over and can we get back to you next week on that one?
Perfect.
What was last year? One and a half?
Uh, one and a half. It was a one and a half percent increase on salaries and 3% on the total budget line, I think. Or maybe, no, maybe it was 3% on salaries. 3% on salaries. And one and a half, yeah, one and a half. It's the other way around.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public cabinet that'd like to share with us tonight?
Come on Dennis.
Dennis, don't feel like you have to get up.
I just thought I would.
Stop looking at him, Ed.
Three, two, one, go. Continue.
I was looking at the clock. We were getting out early.
Yeah, I'd like to give Dennis plenty of time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still get out early.
Yeah. Thank you, Dennis.
Again, I, I know I spoke about this last week, but these purchase orders you're talking about, when you do a budget with a department head, you know what makes that budget up. So you know where you're going to spend the money. And there's really no reason why we just don't do purchase orders for everything. It's, in reality, less work because this is all laid out the first of the year, what you need your purchase orders for. And they don't have to, I'll use a rec for example, okay? They know that they need to spend so much money on uniforms or basketballs or baseballs or whatever. And it might be $1,000. I mean, I'm just picking these numbers out of them. Yeah. But when they do their budget, they know they're going to spend that. And in the beginning of the year, they get a purchase order for that amount. And then when they're going to spend $800 of that $1,000, they don't have to go through gen or they don't have to go through the selectmen. They can just go about it and do their, the thing, whatever the townspeople approve. And the selectmen approve the purchase orders. And so it's, to me, it's going to be a lot easier for the departments to run their budgets. And, but you'd still have the oversight. And running purchase orders on everything really isn't that big a deal.
So you're, so you're thinking like, so at the beginning, let's use my department, for example. So you're thinking at the beginning of the year, if the townspeople approve $1,000 supplies budget for me, $1,000.
Yep.
So I'm going to go get a $1,000 purchase order at the beginning, or I'm going to go get a purchase order every time I decide I need to buy something?
When you, when you put that $1,000 in, because you know basically what you're going to buy. Say it's all from, say that your supplies are all from Staples.
Right.
So in the beginning of the year, you get a $1,000 purchase order and then you just order the stuff. And if for some reason the prices go up and you can't get the stuff for that $1,000, then you go to the selectmen and ask for more money.
I guess with the line item budgets, because we have those amounts in every single individual line now. I have $1,000 in my supplies line. So I can't go over that without board approval anyways. We have a, we have a policy that says, and it says to the treasurer and to myself, anytime you go over a line item amount, you have to get pre-approval. So that's already in place. So the board gets my bills each week from Staples and the treasurer's watching that $1,000 go down. She's not going to authorize anything once that number is zero. And that's why they get the weekly revenue forms and they have the policy in place saying that they have to be okayed in advance.
So, so let me ask you this then. What is the purpose of purchase orders?
Right.
I mean, this is a national, national thing. I mean, businesses, big businesses all use it. Towns use it, schools use it. And honestly, Ron Smith would like to see purchase orders.
How would you, how would you do it with the road commissioners with purchase orders? Tell me, tell me how you think it would work. Help me here.
Well, if, if you, and we'll use the flat ground road again, for example, when they, when they were going to do that project, if there was a purchase order done for that $20,000, in that purchase order, it would be broke down into what that consisted of the $20,000. Because what you get in a purchase order for the project. And then you would have seen the culverts in the, before the project even started. And then if, if the person believed that they could take this money out of the other account, they would say to you, well, I think we can take the money out of this account and do this with it. And then you decide whether or not you really can or not. I mean, it, doing purchase orders for everything is very simple.
Talking about like a purchase order for just one thing. You're talking about you can do, you would say do a purchase order for that whole job.
Yeah.
And have it broken down.
And it's up, and it's up to the road commissioner to break this stuff down. So you would have a purchase order for Gilly Levine, for example, or, or so much a year for the different projects, whether it's shoulder work or whatever. When he puts that budget together, he's going to know he's going to need so many yards of crushed gravel for the year. You know what he's planning on doing, because that's supposedly how he puts his budget together. And so he'll know that you're going to buy a thousand yards from Pepin or something. And you do a purchase order for that. It's just, it, either you do it or you don't do it, is, is my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Dennis.
That wasn't too long, was it?
That's fine. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Announcements. Zoning Board of Appeals hearing tomorrow night here at, on the, tomorrow at four o'clock right here.
Downstairs.
Um, downstairs. That is, let's see, Owl's Luncheon and Alzheimer's presentation.
Can I clarify something on that?
Go, right ahead.
The Owl's Luncheon is at 12:00 and directly following is an Alzheimer's presentation at 1:00.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I kind of put the 12:00 too. I figured.
Well, we tried not to combine it because I think we're going to get different crowds for different things. And I, our cooks can only handle so, I don't want people to come at 12:00 for a presentation and not have enough food.
Yeah, we are doing a roast beef dinner and that gets a little costly for us.
Okay.
It's going to be delicious.
When is this?
Yeah, what's the date?
There's no date on it?
No.
Um, Tuesday. The Owls will be there.
The Owls will, will be, what is it, the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah, the 18th.
Tuesday, the 18th.
And, and that menu actually may, may change from roast beef to individual revise, Um, depending if, if something comes through for us. And, um, so, and, and we're, we're planning on about 38 people. That includes the office. Yes.
You guys are awesome. Thank you so much for feeding us every month.
Tuesday.
Okay.
We look forward to it.
Yeah, but, um, and, and so we do kinda, you know, you must, and I must tell you, there are three of us who do this. Alright, we do the cleaning of the kitchen before we start all the cooking, the serving of people, the cleanup and everything. So there are three of us, so we are, um, you know, we have a great time and Christmas is always a lot of fun, but, um...
We won't advertise it.
And the Alzheimer's...
Three people will...
Put you off the edge.
Yes.
But for the Alzheimer's meeting, uh, if we remember it.
Yeah.
Unintended.
Okay. And the staff Christmas party is, uh...
19th.
19th at one o'clock here. Um, town hall's closing early for that.
And transfer station.
And the transfer station. Yep.
And the library's closed at 1:00.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Anything else, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Nope. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? Good night, all.